It's now recording.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody for coming today. We wanted to get together and find out what's going on with all the parks. And also talk about the property on Park Property on Reed Street. And Nathan, you have an agenda for us?
Yeah, are you able to see it there?
Not yet.
I guess I'll just go to the first item under old businesses. A update for you guys on the progress with the Olmsted Park Grants that we're working on. I guess that's a good place to start. So you guys, I think most of you guys are familiar with the work that we're doing there. We're applying for two grants of $500,000 each for a total of 1 million for the for the Olmsted Park Development Projects. And the applications themselves were submitted at the end of July, so all those were accepted. And are in and the mayor and I are going to be presenting for the two projects on the 24th of this month. So just a little timeline. So once we present, it's just kind of a waiting game and then they'll release their evaluation results. I'm guessing sometime in October, it's a little bit of a weird year with the COVID, but I'm guessing we'll know in October where our project ranks. And then if we rank well, then we actually won't know if we get the money until the legislature meets for legislative session in January. So these things take a little bit of time, not as fast as we would like them to go. But anyway, so that's just a little update on timelines. So I thought it'd be interesting for the group to just kind of see one of the one of the presentations that the mayor and I are going to be doing. And that's the first page that you see pulled up right here. So basically, we're doing these via Zoom and there's a funding committee. There's about a dozen members all over the state that, you know, they look at our project and they've got a evaluation criteria that they follow. And as we're going through and the mayor is reading a script, they're keeping score, basically. So can you advance, Bill? Go advance again. So none of these people know where Cedar Woolley is. So this is kind of how we start. We show them where Skagit County is within the state. And then the next slide. And then we bring him in. Lost it there. So then we show them Cedar Woolley's location within Skagit County and then zooming in a little farther. Next. So then we show them the park location within city limits. See it up in the upper right corner there. So next slide. And then we show them an actual aerial view of the project site with with the boundary kind of drawn around it there. Next slide. And then, so then we go in to talk about, you know, why do we need this? Public need is one of the evaluation categories and I can barely read what that says. But so we basically make our case, you know, we say, you know, all of our existing community parks are pretty much reserved at full capacity all summer. We have no developed parks in the northern half of the city, which is where our projected, the majority of our projected growth is going to happen over the next 40 years. And anyway, so you can see the bullet points there. I won't read them all. So next slide. And then we talk about the housing density and all the all the ongoing development that's happening in the vicinity there. Is that slide? So next. So we show our service area, which is basically the city and urban growth area. Next slide. Then we talked about our population projections all the way through 2036. Next slide. We talked about our demographics of our population here within the city. That's another evaluation category. The next slide. More public need stuff. We have to have any of these RCO grants that we apply for. They have to be pre-planned in our comprehensive plan. That's why it's really important if we have a future project on the horizon, we have to make sure that it's in the comp plan to make sure that it's eligible for funding. So that's what that slide talks about. Next slide. And this is just a site plan of the of the Phase One improvements. I think you guys have probably all seen that. So next slide. And then talks about the scope, which is completing a comprehensive plan goal of adding a park on the northern half of the city. Adds public restrooms and trash enclosures, parking, walking paths, grading drainage and landscaping. Next slide. It just kind of talks about more of this, more of the elements that are in the phase of that we're applying for. So next slide. More more site plan for them to look at. Next slide. And we talked about our design and the priorities of design, talk about how our project is environmentally responsible, which is another category that they're going to be scoring on. So next slide. And that, just some visuals, talks about how the buildings on the site up there have been designed in the to model after the you know, the historic campus of the of the Swift Center. You can see one of the old hospital building there on the upper left and and the proposed sign and restroom facility kind of have that same architectural style on the bottom there. So next slide. And then we talked about how how our project is environmentally friendly and sustainable through all those bullet points. Next slide. And then talk about, what's this one expands and improves and underlie, anyway, that's another another one of our categories is expansion and renovation. So we're showing how we're using an already existing piece of property and improving it. The next slide. This is kind of a cool one. So this is this graphic here that you can see, it's probably hard to see in black and white, but this is the original 1919 landscaping plan that the Olmsted Brothers did for Northern State Hospital and the lower, the box down there in the corner there, there was actually a proposed park that was supposed to be in that location, but it was never constructed. So that's kind of a really cool thing about our project is it completes a portion of their plan that was never, never done.
Hey Nathan, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, have you seen the actual landscaping list for the Northern State Hospital?
As far as plantings?
Yeah.
We haven't gotten into that yet. So the next slide is talks about how far along we are in the process and we're well, I guess it's a couple more slides, but we're we're at about 75% documents right now. And if we get this grant and we go to the 100% level, that's when we'll get into that really more detailed stuff and make sure that all the plantings are appropriate.
And just if you look at the old landscaping plan that the Olmsted's created. Um, it's in that, oh gosh, can't remember the name of the document, but it's in the original, like 600 page document. Um, and there's a listing of the actual plantings that they did. And that'd be kind of cool if we could match some of those plantings in the park area.
Right, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, we're we're under the watchful eye of of the port and they have staff people that are that are making sure that everything that we do there is, you know, appropriate. So I'll make a note of that and make sure that gets looked at. So.
I can, I can pull that up somewhere and get it to you if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great. We'd like to have it.
Okay.
Okay, so next slide. So this just talks about that. They like to see that we have a lot of support for our project in the community. So this is just slides from our open house that we held back in February, I think. So next slide. Some letters of support that we have in the file from large employers, service clubs and governmental, neighboring governmental agencies. So next slide. Just, so this slide's an important one. It talks about our project partner, the Port of Skagit and kind of the overall master plan for the Swift Center that that's being worked on up there. So we wanted to highlight that on a slide. So next slide. Just said, just a few quotes of support for the project from various groups. Next slide. And then we talked about how our project is efficiently designed and so we talked about how we've already invested in the 75% documents for construction. They like to see that we've that we're committed to this at the local level. So next slide. And additionally, we already, so we've got $307,000 in a funding commitment from the port. And we've already got our utility connection stubbed into the site. And we've got letters of support for donated materials for construction. And anyway, just some more, some more of our cost efficiencies that they score us on. So next slide. And then we end on that and just tell them thank you for the opportunity and we, then they have an opportunity to, you know, ask us questions and provide feedback for just a couple of minutes. But the mayor is really good at these. We've been practicing. It takes, they give you 12, I think it's 12 minutes, right, Mayor, to to present in three minutes. You have to have it like right, you know, you have to have it dialed in pretty good. So otherwise they'll cut you off. So but so anyway, that's kind of where we're at with that. Fingers crossed. It's a could be a really, really big project for us and definitely needed. So.
Thank you for showing us that. That's really, that's awesome. Great presentation.
Yeah, and we actually have two of those to do because we have to do one for each grant. Each slideshow presentation is just a little bit different because they have different criteria. So that's it for that item.
All right, thank you.
So I move on to the so the next item is just an update on where we're at with Winnie Hauser Park. I don't have any graphics for you guys on that. I just kind of wanted to let you know where we were at. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to go by Hauser, but we're about 90% complete out there. The parking lot is complete. The irrigation system is complete and functional. All the utility work is done. The restroom is nearly done. We just have the plumbing trim to install and rain gutters and things like that. And then we've got some cleanup work like hydro seeding and soil work and signage and things like that. So if there was a soccer season, they'd be out there using it right now. So so far, we've built the RCO 244,000 and the city has contributed about 160,000 in labor, equipment and materials. And the good news is that project is on budget and on time and we're hoping to get that one closed out by the end of the year. And that'll complete one of the council goals. So we're excited about that.
I have to say, Nathan, the article that was in the paper, that was really well done. You did a beautiful job of talking about the Winnie Hauser Park. And I, I want to kind of just restate what what Nathan has suggested, which is going out and walking around. There is a path that goes around the fields and it is a fantastic walk. It really is. And kind of gives you a feel for the lay of the land. And so I encourage everybody to do that.
Okay, yep, can do that. Be good to see it.
Any questions on Hauser other than that?
I don't think so.
So another one of our big ticket items, Memorial Park, and I do have graphics on that should be the next the next slide, Bill. So it should be the site plan right before that one. Yeah. So I think you guys have seen this. So just for the new council members. Member, I guess. So we had applied for a larger scale project for Memorial Park in 2016 and also again in 2018, we're not successful. And the project was just kind of escalating out of control and costs. So we went back last year and we redesigned the scope of the project there to, you know, make it a little less, less costly. And so that's what you're looking at here. And basically, it was really important to keep the splash pad element. So that's on the lower left hand corner there. And then the new playground around it and just kind of renovating what we have there existing. But even with this project, you know, it's still upwards of about $500,000. This, this stuff is just so expensive. But so we, we had gone to our legislative team last fall to try to get some legislative appropriation money to help us build this. We're not successful last year. So I believe, I believe that's our intention to try to go that route again. But as of right now, that's kind of where we're sitting. We're just researching funding on this.
What is picture on the bottom left? Or kids, is it a climbing wall?
Yeah, that's so we, we kind of, we're going to design the playground as kind of a raised raised structure with slides. Instead of this, instead of, instead of having a playground on flat ground, it'll kind of be while you can kind of see what it is there. It's, you know, kids like to climb and get up on hills and roll down the hill. And that's, that's what we're trying to do there.
Cool. I like that.
So the next slide is kind of the breakdown of the costs of that project. So we broke it up into two phases. The first phase is basically don't, the bulk of the work, all the heavy lifting, the splash pad completes everything except for the playground element. And so Phase One, I think, three I can't read it. 367? Be over to the right and down just a little. 376. So 376 for Phase One and then Phase Two, which would be the play equipment would be another 148. So you get an idea for how how expensive some of this stuff is unfortunately. And we're blessed to have a very capable crew of folks where we can do a lot of this stuff ourself. So these are kind of, you know, worst case scenario things if we're not able to work on any of this stuff ourself, but it's, it's expensive. So that's all I have for you on Memorial Park.
Thank you, Nathan.
So I tried my best to get everything you guys wanted to discuss on the agenda here. So the Reed Street property is the next item on here. And I don't know what you guys would like to discuss there.
So if I just may interject, I don't know that there is a whole lot to discuss. We, we don't have funding for that park and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to put that funding into the budget. I know people were interested in the property that is for sale adjacent to it and I and Doug are going to meet with the owners next week. So you know, quite honestly, unless they deed it to the city, we honestly do not have money to purchase that property. So there really isn't a whole lot to discuss at this moment.
I, so I think what we do need to discuss or what I would like to discuss, because we've talked about this at length and is getting a plan in place and looking at the zoning of that piece of land and putting it in our council goals and objectives and getting this in in line to, to be one of the next projects. I understand that, you know, we have projects that have, you know, that are ahead of this, but it seems to make sense like Nathan just said that if this is part of the comprehensive plan, then down the road, when we pursue funding opportunities, it's not just, well, we decided, you know, last week to put a park here. It's something that's been in the works and
it actually hasn't been, actually, it hasn't been in the works and I do not believe it is in the comprehensive plan.
I'm very aware of that. That's what I'm saying. That's what I want us to do. I want us to have those discussions and work towards that.
I think the council made it clear when we were considering selling the property to Habitat. The council made it clear by majority that we, the city wants to keep that property for park property and nothing else. And many members of the community expressed the desire to have a park in that area as well. And so I think that's what we need to definitely work towards is doing the zoning, getting into our plan. So that it is going to be a reserved piece of property for parks only because that is the only piece of land we have in that area to use. So we need to make
I'm not, I'm not disputing any of that. I'm just, I'm just saying that there really isn't a whole lot to discuss other than
So then let's have a discussion on this, I want this committee to discuss the, the current zoning of the property. I would like to discuss how we go about putting a plan for this park to be in the comprehensive plan. What types of phases, just like we've seen that we've done with other parks, that we can create a phased plan, have a file on this piece of property that this is what we would like to see when the money becomes available. I guess I'm just, I'm astonished that we just, well, we don't have the money. Let's not plan or let's not do anything. I I just, I don't agree with that. I don't understand why we can't
I get that. I get that. But also there could be other factors that may come into play here. We don't know what 2021 is bringing. Cedar Woolley as a city, we actually own a lot of different property. And, you know, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen with all that property or if there is even going to be a need, I don't know. I don't want to say sell it, but, but I, I agree with you that there needs to be a park over there. I don't dispute that at all. But I really would like to see the other projects get completed before we start planning this part.
I'm sorry, I don't see why putting a plan in motion as far as just the zoning purposes hinders any other projects that we may have going within the city. That's not pretty big thing.
No, I agree.
Yeah. So I love Jared's idea about getting it in motion, putting it into the zoning, which Coleman already said in our last weeks, that it is no problem to have that done. And so if we, if we actually, you know, kind of thought about this and we had it zoned into a park, then there is special permitting that we could do while it was getting into zoning so that kids could run around on that park. It's land. It's vacant. Let them throw a football. Let, let's use it. It's just sitting there and it's ours and we want it to be a park. Let's move towards that.
Okay.
Can I weigh in on something here that might help us? So one of the things I've been looking at, I've talked to the mayor about this for the last week or two, Julie and I have been kind of going over it. One of the things that I think would be helpful for the city in a lot of areas is our capital facilities plan. And the ones that I've worked on in other cities for coming to Cedar Woolley, they have probably a lot more planning detail than our existing documents. And one of those, the CFP for parks, I actually have an example. I wish we were all in the same room. I could show it to you. But what you do is you lay out all your parks, all the projects you want to do. And in the next, like year one to year six, you schedule those parks in each of those years. And then years seven to 15, you put anything else that's more on the long term horizon. Then in each one of those years, you lay out what the revenue structure is to fund that year's projects. And then that would go to the Parks Committee. You could look at that and help, you know, make a suggestion on prioritizing the order that those projects get done. And then that way staff has a six year window that we're looking at. So if we had, say, Reed Street coming up in three years, year one, we would schedule zoning and knock that stuff off, get that all done. Year two would be design work and year three would be development, just as an example. But what you have is a sheet that goes right in front of everybody that lays everything out. We know exactly what we're doing over the next six years. And that's a required element of our GMA, of our Growth Management Act, to have that document in place. And I know that's one thing I'd like to have us doing after the turn of the year, not just for parks, but for every department as well. And I think that would be a great thing for you guys to see to give us some input on the priorities and those things.
So what about when things come up, like this potential property that's coming up? And land doesn't come up all the time. It's just so happened to. We need to take a look whether or not it's in the five year plan, 10 year plan. We want this to be a park. This is a potential property that has already utilities on it. You can't just let that go just because it's in your 10 year plan. We need to see, we need to be able to be flexible as well.
You bet. And the thing about that plan is you update it every year and you amend it and do any changes. So if something comes up that suddenly this item that was in year four, we've got an opportunity now, you shift it to year one. But it does come with a caveat that some of those things that are currently in year one may shift out a little bit. I just so we get all the funding and everything lined up the same.
So how is it that we already own that property, but zoning would, how does that hinder us from moving forward for the zoning? I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, I, I don't know that the zoning would be the, the issue there. The zoning is going to be more funding. And that, but I think zoning is something we can work on and do that. It would all impact what the timing of that project would be.
Right.
But that's something that we can do.
And I do believe that needs to go before the Planning Commission. I think they, is that right, Doug? I think that's something that we need to go before the Planning Commission.
I think so. That we'd have to get that on the docket and get that in the timeline.
Well, and the other thing we need to go to the Planning Commission after discussion from the council, and this was brought up by John Coleman, is we haven't taken a, a very good look at our park impact fees. And I think in one of the slides that Nathan just showed us, you know, we're looking at potentially 250 new homes up by the golf course. And, you know, we know that the city is going to continue to have growth and we need to have, you know, proper fees to support that. And I think it also deals into what Doug's saying as far as having that plan and knowing where those funds are, are coming from.
Right. So something that actually Doug and I were talking about today, Nathan had brought up that the property that we're hoping that we're going to acquire from PUD, they haven't turned it over to us yet. But Nathan has had conversation with the, I believe it's the Little League, who is going to be paying us to maintain that. So for them, so that they can use it as a ball field. The other thing that I kind of mentioned to Doug, and I don't know, Nathan, what your thoughts are on this, but also any kind of fees that teams may need to pay a yearly fee or whatever to play like on Winnie Hauser or the other parks. The Denny Inberg Park. You know, what are your thoughts on that? Which would be
Yeah, that's, that's actually part of what I, what I've been working on. It's a little bit different with, and it's a discussion we need to have, I guess, at the staff level. We, you know, like the Cedar Woolley youth soccer, they've contributed a lot of capital dollars. They've been really good partners in getting, you know, like they, they put, they gave us a lot of money to to get going on Hauser as far as the seeding and you know, getting some of the watering done out there. So they've contributed a lot of those capital dollars. So we need to figure out, you know, how, how long do we let them go? You know, I, you see where I'm going with that?
Right, right.
I don't want, I don't want, I feel bad charging them when they, when they've already contributed money, but that can't continue forever. At some point, you know, they're going to have to assist with ongoing maintenance, you know.
Right.
But yeah, no, I did, I did that fee schedule that I had been working on, you know, over the course of the year. It does include a field usage fee for Hauser as well. So that's kind of part of the funding.
Yeah, I think that that, that can be beneficial too. It'll certainly help with the maintenance.
Yeah. And, and we're one of the only cities that does not do, does not charge field usage fees like that. So it's and a lot of people are finding out about that. And that's why we're getting some different leagues wanting to come over here. So we're
Right.
we're kind of our own worst enemy by not having that ready to go, you know.
Well, back to the Reed Street property. What is preventing us from moving ahead on the zoning? So that children could use that airfield area like Joel and suggested. What prevents
I don't think there's anything. It's just a matter of putting it into the works, putting it in, putting it through the channels that it needs to go through. For the zoning, for the zone.
Do that. How could we do that? What's the next step?
So we would bring that, you would make a recommendation to the council. And the council then would vote on whether or not they want to have the Planning Commission take a look at that for the rezoning. And I think we would want to get clarification to make sure that it actually has to go through the Planning Commission because it may be as easy as just the council itself doing it. So I don't know, Doug, if you know for sure one way or the other, but just so you know. Doug, if you know for sure one way or the other, but just so you know, in case it is the Planning Commission, that, that, that may be the step. But you would make a recommendation, you would vote here, make a recommendation to the council. And then the council would take a vote as to whether or not they want to take it before the Planning Commission to consider rezoning it. So that, that would be the steps.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Is that Jared and Joel? And what are your thoughts on moving forward on that?
Absolutely.
Definitely. That's what I would like to see. And I just, I wanted to ask Nathan, you know, because I've never physically like walked that piece of property. I guess what would be your thoughts just from a point of, you know, safety of once that's done and, you know, to make it just basically an open space and something that, you know, just like I, I told one of the council members that I talked to about this park, I grew up at a friend's house on Reed Street and playing football out in the middle of the road. And it's like, so how can we make this a safe, accessible place that it's, it's dirt that the city owns that we eventually want it to be a park? So, you know, how do we go about, you know, I, I know it gets mowed, but how do we make sure that, you know, low spots are filled in? And it's just, you know, it's, it's an open space that can be used and as we make this plan for down the road.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not, it's not terrible the way it is. Like, like I, or like you were saying, we, we mow it right now about every three weeks. You know, to make it usable, we'd probably bump that up to a weekly mowing. There's a, when we first bought that property and did some work on, you know, clearing some of the, the junk out of there, we, we put a storm drainer drain ditch that runs east and west that we would probably need to regrade. So that's not such a drop off. So there, there'd be a little bit of work to make it usable, but I don't think it would be anything too, too significant. You know, a couple of truckloads of dirt to fill in some holes and, you know, maybe a week's worth of crew time to kind of tune things up there.
Perfect.
Okay, well. Go ahead.
Brenda, I was just going to say, I would make a motion for the committee to make a recommendation to the full council that the, I believe it's 205 North Reed Street property be looked at, assessed for rezoning through the proper procedures.
Make that motion at the meeting or right now? Next council meeting?
I guess I would make the motion that the committee, the committee make that recommendation to the council.
I'd like to make a motion that the committee make the recommendation to the council to look at reassessing North 25 North Reed Street for potential rezoning. Did I say that right?
That works.
You did great. Yeah, you did great. You did great.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I second it.
Okay.
Sorry.
So are we all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will do that at the next council meeting. We will make that recommendation.
Now I have a question regarding that property. So am I understanding that if they don't deed it to us, it will just be a no?
Right, unless there's, right, yeah.
So what if, so do we?
The, actually the answer would have to be that the council has to look and assess it during, to see what's in the budget.
Yeah.
Is that correct Doug?
Yeah, I think that would be something, it probably wouldn't be appropriate to try to sign that now, just a month or two before the budget process. But I think to give it a, a good look and fair input, we would put that in there as an item just to see how that shakes out. It's, it's going to be tight this year, but it's at least something we can ask the question.
Definitely think we should look at that because with all the utilities in there and everything, it's, save us money in the long run.
Yeah.
I believe.
My concern is that the, the bit of land that we have over here in Ward Two, letting a time constraint for that, and how do we not let it slip through our fingers because we weren't ready for it?
You're talking about the property that is for sale?
Yes.
So well, we're going to meet with them next week and we're going to see exactly what it is they're asking for the property. Yeah, the budget is really, is really tight, but the council is going to be experienced. You'll hear that. You'll hear as we go along exactly what it is that we're looking at.
I guess I just, I've been looking at the budget and some different ideas. And so an idea that I'm throwing out, the City Council Strategic Reserve, does that not count for something like this? The money that's allocated in there?
Yes, it would.
We also make a payment out of that, don't we Doug? Use that money? Yeah, we.
I believe we have enough.
So I'll go, go ahead and answer that question for a second. That's at council's discretion and what they do. There is a commitment of about 50,000 a year that goes to a loan payoff right now. This would be a one time expense and there's probably close to about $400,000 in that discretionary fund. So just to let you know, and there is money that goes in there each year that kind of helps replenish that 50,000.
And how much is that? How much is that Doug? Just so they would know, the council would know how much was available.
I'd have to double check it because it's on a revenue source that's been declining a little bit. I think it's the cellphone utility tax. But I could check that. As long as we have enough revenue coming in to cover that bond payment of 50,000 a year, we're good. It would just be a council decision if they want to draw down the fund balance by the amount of the property purchase. If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
So it's like drawing down your savings account for that, you know, but as long as we don't jeopardize our other commitments.
So would we be able to take a look at that before you say if they're not willing to deed it to us that, no, we can't purchase it? Or I just want to make sure that that doesn't.
I think, Joel, I think anything is possible. I think it's just a matter of what we have and what we're looking at as far as the budget. I do know, I, well, I think anything is possible. So why don't we just hang on and see what's what?
So when are you guys meeting with the property owners?
Next week.
Okay, so we would have information that we would be able to bring to council relatively quickly. Once that meeting happens, we would, we would at least know what their purchase price is asking and then we could.
Right, what their expectations are, right?
Right.
Yeah, and I, I think if we had that information, what I would suggest is an executive session. And under, under the RCW, it's for negotiation, the purchase of real estate, and that would be a good conversation to have.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah.
Great. Okay, well, have we touched on everything that we need to then?
I had one, just one final quick thing. I had, I had a bullet light or bullet item here for 2021 budget and.
Oh, right. All right, Nathan.
That's okay. Just kind of the biggest ticket item, you know, we, we've talked about this long term planning. You, you guys were, we are attempting to fund a, some consultant dollars to do a, a, you know, more detailed parks master plan. You know, they'll, they'll take our comp plan and then they'll, they'll kind of go to the, they'll take it to that next level and get into the details of it. So that's exactly what you guys were talking about. And that's one of the council goals. So there, there's going to be some dollars requested in the budget for that. And as part of that, we're going to get a level of service analysis. Now they'll take a look at how much land we have and they'll kind of give us a, a recommendation on, you know, this is how you should be taking care of it. We're thinking maybe that might be useful for us going forward. And that's pretty much it. You know, we, we've, we've deferred all of the items or we've put back in all the items that we deferred from, from this year due to the COVID, just some maintenance things like roofs on a couple picnic buildings. I think I covered those when, during our work session last week. But, but the amount that the planning thing is their big, big thing I wanted to mention in the budget. So. And that's about all I have. So.
Okay. Oh, Nathan, I just want to say I'm out here at Riverfront Park right now and it just looks beautiful out here. It's just so lovely.
Beautiful day.
It's, um, it's being taken care of so well, even with everything going on.
I'll pass that on to Ken and Loretta. They do a great job down there.
Yeah, they sure do, for sure.
Thank you, Nathan. That was a good meeting.
Thank you very much.
Very exciting guy.
Jared, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just, I think it was good discussion and I look forward to, you know, planning and how we can bring more revenues in for parks and good work.
So we'll plan on bringing that recommendation to the council at our next meeting then. Well, thank you, everybody for being here and participating in your presentations. We're awesome, Nathan. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Nathan.
You bet.
Bye, guys.
Bye bye.
Hey, thank you. Bye bye.